Ladies and gentlemen, forgive our slight tardiness here, but we'll call the Tuesday, March 6, 2012, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. This evening, I'll call upon Commissioner Frank Mitchell to deliver our invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we assemble before you tonight, we ask for your blessings and guidance as we undertake issues that are presented to us. Help us to make the right decisions, to respect the needs of all our citizens. And Father, we ask that you look at families that have suffered losses due to the recent storms throughout our country. Be with them as they restore their lives and their communities. We also ask that you be with our troops and keep them from harm's way as they protect our great nation. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, do you have any adjustments of the agenda from the staff this evening?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add two items under closed session, and both of these will be under attorney-client, and that would be under General Statute 143-318, 11A3.
Okay. That's all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any adjustments from any member of the board this evening? Okay. Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion of adoption of this agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. This evening, we're pleased to have on our agenda the presentation of a plaque of appreciation to Iredell County Library Retiree Libby Stewart. Libby, if you'd come forward, we'd like to present you with the plaque, please. Ma'am, Steve, would you join us, please?
Right front, center. Can y'all hear me with this? Okay. Libby, it gives me pleasure, on behalf of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners and our administrative staff, and indeed, all the citizens of Iredell County, to present you this plaque of appreciation for your years of dedicated service to the library and the folks in Iredell County. Now, don't be breathing so hard, there's nothing to be nervous about up here.
My asthma's acting up.
But I did, Steve, if you'd indulge me here a minute, I did recognize one thing when we went into the process of building the library facility that y'all are in now. It became abundantly clear to me, as far as the interior decoration, there was no doubt he was in charge of that during that process.
Especially the carpet.
I think you delegated well there, sir. She stayed right on top of it. But we're very appreciative, Libby. You've been wonderful for the library and wonderful for the county, and we really thank you. And Steve, thank you for what you do over there in your state. Would you like to say a few words? Okay, all right. Well, we love you, Libby. We hope you'll come around, okay?
Oh, I will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have no appointments for the board this evening, and no public hearings, so we'll move to administrative matters. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. First request is memo number two, and this is a request from the Transportation Department. Ben Garrison is here, for Budget Amendment Number 36, to accept the camera system, camera system equipment purchased through a statewide North Carolina DOT grant.
Good evening. This is to ask for a budget amendment to approve the receipt of an asset worth $69,337. This is actually to put video surveillance equipment on 20, four camera systems on 26 of our buses, and two camera systems on two of our minivans. It also includes all the wireless download equipment, software, and training. This project is beginning statewide. There's a lot of excitement about the equipment going on buses in North Carolina, so we're ready to move forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Garrison?
I do. Under, um, under our format here, I ask about the current and future budget implications, and you say none because the grant is paying for the equipment. Are there, are there not any recurring costs to operate the monitoring system?
No, the, the equipment, the wireless download downloads onto one of our existing computers, so we don't have support fees or maintenance fees that are associated with it. Occasionally, we might have to replace a hard drive. They have a 180-gigabyte hard drive, but basically, that's it. The equipment would have like a seven-year life on it, and what we're thinking at the end of the seven years, that, that equipment, what needs to be replaced could be replaced through our regular CTP applications, our, our regular grant applications.
Or let's assess whether or not it added value, and if it-
Right.
If it didn't add value, then let's not replace it.
Right.
Okay, all right, good.
Any other questions?
Does this money include the installation, or is this just the cost of the equipment?
That's the, that's the equipment and the installation, the software, and the training.
Thank you.
The, the equipment has a Wi-Fi download where certain events that are tagged are automatically downloaded onto a computer, so all of that equipment is included here.
Any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, a move that we approve Budget Amendment Number 36, in order to accept the vehicle video/audio surveillance equipment. Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The next item we have is memo number three, and Steve Messick with the library will be requesting for approval to apply for E-rate discounts from the FCC.
Good evening. I'm asking for the board's permission for the library to apply for E-rate discounts for telecommunications services for fiscal year 2012, '13. The library's been participating in this program since 2001. It's a program under the Federal Communications Commissions, where school and libraries receive discounted rates for telecommunications services. I've summarized the total cost there in the memo that you should have received. We are eligible for a 70% discount on these services, so you see the different services listed there with an annual cost of $29,583, and that the E-rate discounts would fund $20,708, leaving a total cost to the county of $8,874. One change with this year is we are changing our service provider for the DSL line, for the Troutman Library, and we are going to see a considerable cost savings there because we are switching providers from Windstream to Time Warner Cable Service. And the, this year, the total cost of the, the service to Troutman, the, before the discount is $10,140, and we've been paying $3,042 with the discount. Well, with this new service from Windstream, from, excuse me, from Time Warner, our costs will only go down to $295 annually, so we will see a considerable cost savings there. But that new service for Troutman is part of a three-year contract, and I have submitted that contract to the purchasing agent, Dean Lael, and to Mr. Pope for their review. So if you approve this item request, you'll in effect be approving that three-year contract.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Messick? All right. Floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, a move for approval. Motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The next four items, C through F, are going to be handled by Donna Campbell, our Health Director.
Excuse me. My first request is for a full-time social worker-to-position to work in our pregnancy care management program. Early in 2011, the state reorganized our maternity care coordination program into the pregnancy care management program, and with that reorganization came additional funding and additional expectations that we would staff in order to meet the increased caseloads. So I'm requesting permission to hire a full-time social worker-to-position.
Any questions, Ms. Campbell?
On, on this, on this position, your paperwork indicates that, that this is going to be funded not out of county funds, but via a grant that we're getting from the state, correct?
Right. This will be Medicaid. We get per-member-per-month payments for the number of clients that are in Iredell County, and so that would be a flow-through to us, and it would be covered by Medicaid funds.
Is, is this anticipated to be an ongoing pass-through, or is this a one-time-only, we hire them, but then in the future, that, that salary obligation is on the county?
It is anticipated to be ongoing, but as with our other social worker positions, it's always been an understanding with the commissioners that if the funding goes away, the position is terminated too.
Correct. Okay.
Is there, are there enough workers that we could utilize current social workers in this position and potentially not hire someone, but transfer someone? Do you know? Like, from DSS that's already employed to the Health Department?
I'm not aware of DSS having excess social workers at this point, and certainly, if that were the case, we could, you know, look at an internal transfer, but typically, you know, they have that option when we do open up the positions, so I'm not aware that there would be a social worker that DSS did not need at this point.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, a move for approval. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Our next item is request for approval of a budget amendment to accept $25,000 in federal Title X funds to perform tubal ligations, and this is a one-time funding, a bonus funding that we have received, and this would be to provide sterilizations to low-income women that would not otherwise be eligible for this service.
Any questions?
These will not be forced on anybody. They'll be voluntary.
Oh, these are completely voluntary, always.
Okay. For, how many of these procedures you think can be performed for this money?
Eight.
All right, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number 38.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Our next item is a request to be able to accept one-time funding from the North Carolina Comprehensive Cancer Program in the amount of $2,750 to plan and implement a prostate cancer event in June 2012.
Any questions? If there are no questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 39.
Okay. Motion for approval comes from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Our last item is request for approval of a C, a new CPT code for us, 76817, and that's for transvaginal ultrasounds and the related fee of $252. We now have a new transvaginal ultrasound head and can perform that in our clinics, and that's especially helpful for early in pregnancy in our maternal health clinic.
Okay. Any questions?
That 252 reflects your cost?
Yes.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the CPT code 76817 with a fee of $252.
Okay, motion for approval from Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is a request from the Solid Waste Department for approval to apply for a 2012 Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. This is memo number eight, and David Lambert is going to make the presentation.
Good evening. As Ron said, I'm here to request permission to apply for a North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources Community Waste Reduction Grant to be used for starting a shingle recycling program. The grant proceeds will be used to fund infrastructure, building a retaining wall for a box site, unloading area, and purchasing two roll-off containers. The total cost is estimated to be $32,000. We're requesting $26,666 from the state with a local match of 20%, which is a little bit over $5,300. This is a particularly good program in that it's, it offers us space savings, and there's a dollar value that's attached to that in the landfill, and I use conservative numbers here and came up with the annual savings if we just recover 50% of the shingles in the initial stages. It'd offer us about a $58,000 year value in landfill space savings, and it also allows us to pass some of that savings and tip fees, because we're not putting it in the landfill, we can pass the savings along to the roofers and homeowners in the county, and I'm guessing on an average home's probably going to be about $50, you know, that, that's that much this day and time. So, you know, I just think it's a really good program. It's a unique program. We'll be the second county in the state to do this. Pitt County's been doing it for a good number of years and had a lot of success with it, and we have had a local company to express interest, and they're willing to partner with us in the program, and they're very excited about it, so just like to ask the permission to go ahead and apply for the grant.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Lambert?
Are, are you going to put a, a container there so I can take my old shingles and dump them in, or what, what, how we're going to do this?
Well, that's the idea. We'll have two containers, and people that come with a small load in the pickup where it's got to be hand-unloaded, they can put them directly into the container. People that come with the big loads can dump them on the cement slab, and we'll, we'll load them in the box with the machine.
And then they're going to take them over there to May Mead, and they melt them down with their asphalt?
Exactly.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
We think so.
Am I going to have to pay to dump them in there now, too, or?
Well, current tip fee's $37 a ton with the state tax on it, but we're thinking probably we could do it for $20 a ton, so almost cuts it in half.
Engineer question, not a commissioner question. Roofing nails, where is that separated out?
Well, they say that's not going to hurt, that it goes through a grinding process, and the roofing nails actually won't be a problem. The things they want out of it's going to be the, you know, the felt paper and the, you know, the packaging and bits and pieces of wood.
Huh. Okay, cool.
You say the felt paper won't be, they won't take it?
Evidently, it does have enough asphalt content.
Okay.
Is May Mead going to charge a fee to partner with us?
No, no.
And if they decide not to continue the service, do we, are there other companies that will-
We did talk with a-
In contact?
We did talk with another company, and they were interested initially, but then they backed out on it. I'm not sure what the reason was there. If this did fall through, it's been past experience with these type grants, that as long as the side and the materials that we've purchased is still used for recycling, there's no repercussions there.
David, I was up at the transfer station on 901 the other day, and I thought I heard a gentleman up there say the old waste oil that people are bringing, you're getting 73 cents a gallon for that now, it's going to the asphalt business? Is that pretty close to-
Well, I can't tell you where it's going. I don't know that, other than we have a vendor picks it up, but the price sounds pretty close, yeah.
All right, that sounds good, if you're doing something. Now, I did have a complaint, I said to you earlier about a gentleman wanting to know why we didn't do green glass recycling. Can you explain to the board why we don't do green glass recycling?
Well, I can. Glass is an easy thing to recycle, but as you know, silica's the most common element on the planet, and green glass is just not a market for. We can pay somebody to take it off our hands, but that's going away from what our goals for the recycling programs being.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for approval from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Just want to thank Mr. Lambert. He's been pretty aggressive about trying to make our landfill space stretch out, which even though we're good to go for, for a couple of decades, you know, the time, the time to save that space is now, not waiting until we, we need it again. Appreciate the work.
The last administrative item is a request for approval of the February 21, 2012 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion for approval or amendment if necessary?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. First announcement we have is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We have one announcement. Next, we have the Partners Behavioral Health Management Board. We have four announcements. We're in a little bit of a deadline on that. We need to have those nominated by the end of March, so we need to do that at our next meeting. I have some nominees in mind. If any board member has any, I'd appreciate if you'd get them to me as quickly as possible, or-
You'll, you'll stay on it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We can do that one tonight, can't we? We would have to suspend the rules.
We'd have to suspend the rules.
Go this way.
Well, I mean, one of the ladies that could serve is your wife, and we certainly won't take, do deliberation there, you might have to live with the consequences of it.
I don't know about that. You've got some good people on that board.
Yeah, we do. We really do. Okay, we move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have the Animal Grievance Committee. We have one appointment. Floor is open for nominations.
Motion to prove Grant Miller.
Okay, motion.
To appoint.
We have a nomination for Grant Miller. There aren't any other nominations. Hearing none, I move that we close the floor to nominations, appoint Grant Miller by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and we have one appointment for that.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Eric Carrillo.
We have a nomination of Mr. Eric Carrillo. Are there any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Eric Carrillo by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the Historic Properties Commission. We have three appointments. Floor is open for nominations.
Chairman, I nominate Robert Woody, Keith Holland, and Raymond Turner.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint these three by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next is the Board of Equalization and Review, and I believe we have an alternate position open. Are there any nominations? I have one, Mr. Karen Cardy. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Ms. Cardy by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention? Public comment period. That's usually the second meeting, but has anybody signed up? Any new business to come to our attention? County managers report.
Mr. Smith? Chairman, I have, have two things. One is, our retreat is coming up this Friday and Saturday, and I understand that there's a, there's a time conflict, and was wondering if we could move that back to 9:30 and from our original starting time on Saturday of 8:30. And also, well, see if that's okay.
Yeah, I think that's agreeable to everybody. We had a-
Will we conclude at 1:00 then?
We'll try and adjourn by 12:00 if we can. We're going to shuffle a couple things around to put on Friday, or Friday's agenda.
If, yeah, that'll be fine. I think if we can get it out of there by 2:00 o'clock, every talking to everybody, I think everybody'd be good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a wedding that afternoon.
Okay.
So I, I need to, 2:00 is going to be too late.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you'll have some valuable input while you're there if you need to leave.
I will.
I'm sure you will. And we'll appreciate your input.
Okay.
So if you need to depart early, that'll be fine.
And we had scheduled that breakfast was going to be at 8:30, and since it's going to be 9:30, I'm assuming that you all will have already taken care of that, so we'll just move right into the agenda.
Okay, that's fine. 9:30 then.
And the second item that I have, David Martin with ECOM and Emergency Management had asked me to let y'all know that Severe Weather Awareness Week in North Carolina is March 4th through the 10th, and that's been designated by Governor Perdue, and this is just a week that emergency management urges the public to take a look at severe storm and tornado plans, you know, in your business and in your homes. So we just wanted to bring that out and let you know that that is March 4th through So, just wanted to bring that out and let you know that that is March 4th through the 10th. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this point, I move we go into closed session under attorney-client privilege, general statute 143, 318, 11A3. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.